Welcome to a debate for the Town of Winchester Select Board sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Winchester. This debate will be followed this evening by a debate for the Planning Board. My name is Lynn Brodsky. It is my pleasure to represent the League of Women Voters of Winchester as we bring you this evening's event. Thank you to WinCam for hosting the Zoom format of this event and for broadcasting and streaming it to the public over local cable TV channels and the WinCam website respectively. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization with a mission to promote informed participation by all eligible voters and public understanding of major policy issues. We do not support or oppose any candidates or political parties. We do study and take positions about major policy issues. We are organized at the national, state, and local levels. Our policy positions and activities can be reviewed on the respective websites. If this forum and our mission meet your needs or even inspire you, we encourage you to donate or become a member. All people may join. Student membership is free. This year, there are contested seats on four townwide boards, and these are the subjects of two debates this evening and two debates held last week. All candidates who are debating this week, the candidates who are running unopposed, and many of the candidates for town meeting have generously provided the league with information about themselves and about their candidacies. You may find these candidate profiles on our website at l w v winchester dot O R G. Thank you, candidates, for submitting your profiles to the league. This evening's debate will be moderated by Margaret Kope. Margaret is a trained league moderator and a member of the League of Women Voters of Lexington.
Thank you. Good evening. The Winchester Select Board has five members, each serving a three-year term. Election for these seats are staggered. This year, four candidates are running for two seats on the Select Board. The candidates running for Select Board are James Johnson, John Fallon, and Thea Brady and Vincent Dixon. Sometime after this day was scheduled, Mr. Fallon informed the league that a scheduling conflict had come up, so he will not be participating in this live debate. And I want to point out also that Mr. Dixon had some technical problems with his camera, so while you won't see his face, you will hear his voice. Each candidate will have up to 90 seconds for an opening statement, and we do have a time clock that will be visible to them and to you. The order of speaking was determined ahead of time by a random method. After that, I will ask the candidates a series of prepared questions in rotating order. Each candidate will have up to 90 seconds for each answer. After each set of answers, the candidates or I may request a rebuttal. Should a candidate choose to rebut, the candidate will have up to 30 seconds to do so. I may on occasion allow a second round of rebuttals or ask a follow-up question depending on how the discussion has gone. Personal references about other candidates are out of order. After our final question, each candidate will have up to 60 seconds for a closing statement. The closing statements will be given in reverse order from the opening statements. We will now start with the opening statements, 90 seconds each, and the order of the opening statements is James Johnson, followed by Vince Dixon, followed by Anthea Brady. Opening statements now from Mr. Johnson.
Good evening, everybody, and I hope everybody's enjoying the show. I think it's a great public service, and I'd like to thank the League, WinCam, and you, Madam Chairman, for organizing it and managing it and running it. Winchester is a better place because of debates like this. We have the opportunity to hear people and their opinions. But thank you. My name's James Johnson. I'm commonly referred to around town as Jim Johnson. I am a product of Winchester. I attended Winchester Public Schools. I went to the George Washington School, the McCall School, and the Winchester High School. Right after I graduated from high school and on my way to college, I started a little part-time business, which was in the oil business, and 49 years later, me and my oil business is still in town. I met my wife Barbara Scholl, who's a Winchester girl. We made the decision to start our life here and to bring our children up in Winchester. We decided to raise our five children, our three children here, Jimmy, Robbie, and Jennifer Johnsons. Winchester's been a very good place to us, and we appreciate this town. We appreciate everything it does for its citizens and how hard all the volunteers in this town work, and hopefully will work together to make Winchester a better place. I am qualified. I have the knowledge of municipal town government. I have served on the Board of Selectmen.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes?
Interrupt you, but your time is up.
Oh, okay. We'll go back to that then. Thank you for that few minutes, few seconds of the...
You could work your stuff into some of your other answers. Mr. Dixon? Is Mr. Dixon still with us?
Can you hear me okay?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, you have 90 seconds.
We live in challenging historical times. In meeting the challenges that face our Winchester, we must recognize the needs for a sustained, comprehensive, and detailed approach. I am asking you to join me in building such a united effort to help steer Winchester and accomplish constructive progress both in our town and through broader coalitions in our Commonwealth while recognizing the need for important federal roles in terms of actions and resources. My name is Vincent Lawrence Vince Dixon, and through this program and other issues presentations, electronic and printed, I am detailing both the overall story of our Winchester and the actions that I will seek to take if you honor me with your vote for Select Board in the Saturday, March 19, 2022 town election. These issues include dynamic engagement in the rule of law, which, if we faithfully carry out, is a useful and potentially objective set of requests and guidelines for town government and actions to bring Winchester into being a quality town of the 21st century. I appreciate this opportunity to address issues of Winchester during this campaign for Select Board at the Saturday, March 19, 2022 town election, voting for which will be held, of course, at the Winchester High School. The high school was located at 80 Skilling's Road, and if you've ever been in Cambridge or Boston, you may be pleased that there is substantial free parking immediately adjacent to the high school, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon. Our next candidate is Anthea Brady. Ms. Brady, you have 90 seconds.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this debate and to WinCam, to my fellow candidates for being here, and to everyone watching at home. I'm Anthea Brady, and I'm running for Select Board because I'm committed to making long-term investments in Winchester. I've lived in the Boston area for most of my life, and I'm proud to have called Winchester home for the past eight years. I'm a mom to two boys, and we live over in precinct one near the Morocco School. I have a background in public policy, research, and grants management. I've worked for over 15 years with federal, state, and local agencies to help improve and implement work funded by state and federal funds, particularly with schools and student success. I've written numerous contract and grant applications, and I understand the complex processes in public sector procurement. I'm a project manager and regularly work with data collection and technology tools. Locally, I serve on the town's personnel board. I'm a volunteer with Winchester ABC, having previously been a tutor and am now in my fourth year as the admissions chair. I have been on the fan board since 2017, serving for three years as the membership co-chair. In 2012, I co-founded Boston's Young Education Professionals Network, and I've served on the William and Mary Boston Alumni Association. I'm committed to public service and to connecting people to access the resources that they need. As a member of the Select Board, I'll work with my colleagues and with Winchester residents to build and maintain connections that help us invest in our vibrant town. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brady. I will now ask a series of questions that were prepared by the League of Women Voters of Winchester with extensive input from the public. The questioning will end at 8 o'clock to allow for closing statements, even if we're not able to get to all the questions. And since it's now 7:10, gives you some idea, we have about 15 minutes for these questions. And the first question, which speakers will be Mr. Dixon, Ms. Brady, and Mr. Johnson. Mr. Dixon, is there any single issue that motivates you to run for Select Board? If yes, what is it and why? If no, what do you think is the most important issue facing the town today? And you have 90 seconds.
Well, that's, of course, a simple task for a complex set of issues. The two issues that I'm particularly focused on are the rule of law. We need to pay more attention to the town charter, to open meeting law, and other roles, and these are guidelines developed as the Harvard graduation says, those wise restraints that make us truly free. But more importantly, we need to bring Winchester from the 20th into the 21st century, and that includes neighborhood-friendly, higher-density development in the downtown and North Main Street areas to bring in the revenue that we need. And there are a host of other issues, and I believe I'm the only candidate who's taken a clear position that we should use some revenue to make sure that there is a full preschool program, that we don't subject students and families to a random lottery. If this is, in fact, the good school system that it is, we shouldn't be saying, oh, but you wait a year if you lost a lottery. That's certainly one of the example of many questions we have. We have to focus on two or three major issues. We should have issues, programs at the beginning of the Select Board so that people are updated on them, and compile a municipal laundry list of the frankly dozens of other smaller issues that are important, such as an electric shuttle for the area regional transportation, perhaps linked with Lexington, and other issues as well.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon. Ms. Brady, do you need me to repeat the question?
No, I think I've got it. Thank you. Thank you. The primary issue that motivated me to run for Select Board was to really increase the transparency and clarity of town government for our residents. It can be hard to get into what's happening on a day-to-day basis with so many boards in town and so many different priorities. And from my background working with states and districts who are implementing their grants, we have some key strategies and tools to make communication clear and easy so that grantees can communicate what their big goals, priorities, and outcomes are, and so that their constituents and people that they're working with can understand and see how every action that they're taking is really contributing to what those long-term plans are. So when I look at kind of what the priorities in town are, and I think of the wonderful vibrant community, I consider how we can make this a safer, better place for all of our residents to feel that they're supported in the long term, that Winchester is a wonderful town and community, and that we're also really clearly articulating and presenting what we're doing to get there and to make the next stretch of the town of Winchester just as good as it was for the years that we got here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brady. Mr. Johnson, would you like me to repeat the question?
Please do.
Okay. Is there a single issue that motivates you to run for Select Board? If yes, what is it and why? If no, what do you think is the most important issue facing the town today? You have 90 seconds.
Thank you. There are several issues that made me decide to run for the Select Board. The first and foremost and all-encompassing issue is that I want to make Winchester a better place to live and to work for all its citizens. I want people to be able to communicate. I want to be able to communicate with board, with the Select Board, with town staff, other boards, and the public. I want people to be able to listen, think rationally, and be able to work together to come to a very good conclusion that will be moving our town towards my goal of making Winchester a better place. There are several issues that needed to be addressed. One of the first thing is, I'm a true believer in the Winchester Home Rule Charter, quote, "The Town Chatter." It's a great document. It sets out rules and guidelines how to manage the town with various boards, including Select Board and the Town Manager. I think we should really go back to that. The Select Board basically says it has and should have a full five-member board. We don't have that now since the summer. That has led to confusion and not a cohesive board, I believe, the town.
Johnson, your 90 seconds is up.
Oh, wow.
I know. It goes fast, doesn't it?
Are you sure that clock is working right?
I am sure, yes. Next question, we will start with Ms. Brady. And how will you approach competing budget priorities? What issue should be addressed first because it offers a high value for comparatively low expense? And conversely, what program or expense might you cut or eliminate? Ms. Brady, you have 90 seconds.
So to answer this question, I think we have a lot of opportunities to look at what we're doing well and what we're doing efficiently, and identify where we may have areas that can sort of shave off some funding in order to make better use of our budget. I think as a top priority, and while it's not necessarily a large fiscal priority, it is in terms of town management, is making sure that we are able to undertake a search process for the town manager in order to have stability with our town government by this fall, knowing that there may be several months in the process. I think as we look at what our competing priorities and how to cut things, I don't think we want to go forward and make any specific cuts of any program, but what we're doing are necessary. But there are some opportunities that we can look to how we can better create planning, such as planning for our recreation department, that gives us opportunities to apply for grants to improve some critical services like playgrounds and things that will bring people into the town, bring families from out of town to Winchester for some of the recreation facilities, and then into using our businesses downtown and visiting those neighborhoods within Winchester Center. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, would you like me to repeat the question?
Please.
How will you approach competing budget priorities? What issue should be addressed first because it offers a high value for comparatively low expense? And conversely, what program or expense might you cut or eliminate? You have 90 seconds.
Okay. The budget is a very confusing, long-term process. The Board of Selectmen actually has only a limited part in the budget. The budget is forwarded by department heads to the Town Manager. Town Manager evaluates it, usually consults with the Select Board, then it's forwarded to the Finance Committee. High value, I think everything we do is high value. We must address public safety and public services. The public safety involves the Board of Health, the Fire Department, Police Department, i.e. the emergency response. We must address education and keep that on a foremost. We must approach human resources. We must treat our health openly and fairly, and we have to serve the public. It's a very confusing question of what do you raise and what do you cut. In a real world, you really don't want to cut anything because my assumption is the budget is fairly well-run. It's taken years. It takes months for the Finance Committee, who's practiced their policies since the beginning, to evaluate the budget. We have the town meeting process that evaluates the budget. They vote up the budget, up or down. The budget becomes the Town Manager's budget, to the Finance Committee, to the town, ultimately to the town meeting's budget. We have to set priorities. In this town, we have set the priorities of good public municipal services, public safety first and foremost, education, and a good municipal town hall staff.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Your 90 seconds are up again. Mr. Dixon? Would you like me to repeat the question?
No, I'm fine on that, thanks. I was on the Finance Committee for four years, and though it can be complex, you can also bring some clarity to it when you think about things in a strategic way. With very strong advocacy on my part and eventually other members coming around, I pushed for two additional positions in the Fire Department. A year later, the Fire Chief came in and said, "Thank you," because it had saved $250,000 for the town with less overtime and ability to make other choices. People talk at an artificial god of headcount as though it's wrong to have more employees. Selectively, if you know what the employees are going to do, you can save money. Same thing with full kindergarten. We were one of the last communities to have a full kindergarten. I pushed for that hard. It turns out, we netted some additional revenue from the Commonwealth because we had a higher enrollment. The same thing will happen if we do preschool and it's not subject parents and families to the random lottery. I also recognize many people in the Finance Committee didn't have quite the grounding you might have hoped for, and we created a small training program. I would require all professional and volunteer staff in our government to have training programs on a yearly basis so that people are updated on changes in law, court decisions, regulations, and federal standards. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon. The next question, we'll be starting with Mr. Johnson. The next question is, what is your view about allowing legal residents who are not U.S. citizens to vote in Winchester town elections? Mr. Johnson, 90 seconds.
Yes, this is a very recent proposal that has come forward. I understand the Select Board talked about it two meetings ago. It's a very complex question, and to be completely honest with you, I don't have all the information to make a good decision to move this town forward. I have opinions, but they haven't been studied. They haven't been confirmed. When I make a decision, I like to listen to the, in this case, the Warren article prior to. I'd like to weigh the information. I'd like to let staff and, if we need a consultant, advise us. I want to follow Massachusetts and state law, and if we do it, I want to make sure we do it the correct way. This is a very complicated question that I'm not really ready, but I will be selected, to make a decision and advise the public as a selectman the facts and what is in the best interest for Winchester. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Dixon?
Yes. Thankfully, as a historian, I've actually visited this issue from a narrative position years ago. Some of you may find it interesting that, in fact, women were on a separate voter role in the late 1800s when it was recognized that they, as mothers, were interested in the future of their children and what happened in the school department. And a separate role was created in Massachusetts that allowed women to vote for school committee candidates and therefore run for school committee. Not surprisingly, in Cambridge, a woman was elected to school committee almost immediately. This is very much that way, and our town budget, since its majority is on education and the children, we have many very strong immigrants who are committed to their children, their families, they're productive citizens. If productive citizens can't have a say about their own children as legal residents, I think we've got some real problems. This is a narrow, specific proposal. It would be a home rule petition for the town of Winchester alone. It doesn't create precedent for others. There are other towns and states that are considering this. Unfortunately, the federal government has slowed the citizenship process, and in the example of Afghan refugees, won't even give them full temporary status. So we have to recognize the different levels of government. All this does is provide parents and families with opportunity to have a say about their own children and the money that is spent in the town budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon. Ms. Brady?
Thank you. I believe this is being supported now to go into the spring town meeting warrant, and I fully support this item being brought through. I understand that with Winchester passing this and other towns, that it provides more support to the state in order to make this permissible by town to do. As Mr. Dixon said, we have a number of residents in our town who are not citizens, who have children who go to school in Winchester Public Schools, who pay taxes, who drive on our roads, who use every other service in town, but they don't have a specific opportunity to vote or voice for what their priorities are or for what their needs are that will improve their community. I met a neighbor last weekend, actually, who is not a citizen and is keeping her citizenship in order for their kids to have dual citizenship. And she said, you know, it's unfortunate that she's not able to have a vote on things like our school committee and other boards or potentially be a town meeting member and be able to have some say in how Winchester is using its funding and making decisions for the town. So I believe that this would be an appropriate thing to be passed and to be able to happen in Winchester. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brady. Okay, the next question, we'll be beginning with Mr. Dixon, and the question is, how should the Select Board proceed with the waterfield lot development going forward based on the changes that resulted from the most recent negotiations between the town and Civico? Mr. Dixon, you have 90 seconds.
Of course, this is kind of like a third rail of Winchester politics. Seventy-three votes was the margin in the referendum last June. I don't think that suggests a mandate for anything particular. A compromise has been crafted, will be recommended to town meeting. I support it pending the decision of town meeting, but we have really a set of other complex problems. The federal government has abdicated its role in housing creation. The state has not stepped up. Winchester has to do its job of creating 40 or more affordable units a year to reach eventually the state standard of 10% affordability, but the state has to do more. That's why I've taken a leadership position in filing legislation at the state level for what I have described as community housing packages to provide the incentive and requirement for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to step in and to survey local communities and to help communities that have much more space than we have. We should do our job, but the Commonwealth has to do its job, and we have to work with a regional coalition of Arlington and Lexington, Stonem, Wakefield, other communities around here, all of whom have very much the same kind of pressures and problems. How affording affordable housing is not just a central issue, but it's a Commonwealth issue. It can't be just subject to each little town.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon. Ms. Brady, would you like me to repeat the question?
Yeah, please.
How should the Select Board proceed with the waterfield lot development going forward based on the changes that resulted from the most recent negotiations between the town and Civico?
I believe the Select Board should move forward with the Civico proposal. I think that there was a agreeable compromise reached. I know we gained some additional parking spaces in that compromise. I think the designs that Civico has presented are incredibly good. It went through a very serious procurement process, including pre-qualified bidders, and seeing a number of proposals for that space. And I, looking at the designs and understanding that Civico was really the best option for the town there. Unfortunately, because of the referendum, the thin margin on the referendum, Winchester loses its safe harbor on March 22nd. That, you know, unfortunately creates some concerns about hostile 40B projects. I hope that we can continue to work on other developments collaboratively with developers. I was just on a hearing the other night for a proposal down at Cross Street with the developer present and neighbors and residents asking questions, and I think as much as we can collaborate going forward, get ourselves back into that safe harbor status and continue with increasing the affordable housing stock in Winchester so that we can increase the diversity and create opportunities for people to stay in Winchester.
Thank you, Ms. Brady. Mr. Johnson, would you like me to repeat the question?
No, I think I understand it. Correct me if I'm wrong.
You have 90 seconds.
Okay, the waterfield lots are a very interesting piece of property, which the town of Winchester owns. Okay, the waterfield lots of very interesting piece of property which the town of Winchester owns. Years ago, there were proposals to put a parking garage there that never went forward. It has been an underused asset of the town for a very long time, primarily and only for parking along with the use of the train station building which the Winchester Chamber of Commerce did occupy up until recently and various other tenants. This is tough. This is a tough call. Yes, I support affordable and well-planned, yes, I support well-planned affordable housing. We have to do it in its town. We're behind the ball, and it's going to take a long time to catch up. Don't let anybody get that difference. Winchester needs the affordable housing. That's a good location. It's close to transportation. It's in the middle of town. I think it will have an economic benefit on any project, whatever goes there for the town, the business. It will increase business. It will increase activity downtown. The Civico did come back with the town, did do a better job addressing the concerns of the town. If elected as a selectman, the first thing I would want to do is review all the information, sit down with legal counsel, and look at primarily the financial aspect of it. What really is going to net the town? What is really going to net Civico? What rights?
Your time is up.
You're not telling me I'm over again, are you?
Well, you are.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next question, we'll be starting with Ms. Brady. "How should the select board approach the development of the Washington Swanton Street property, especially considering how the waterfield lot process has played out?" Ms. Brady, you have 90 seconds.
So, Washington and Swanton is actually an area I drive past every day. And I know that there are concerns in the neighborhood about traffic, about increase in that intersection at Washington and Swanton Street and access to the town center from the Woburn side on Washington. I think there has been work between the town and the neighbor to identify a proposal that can work with the neighborhood, to put priorities into an RFP that bidders can respond to and can meet the priorities, can exceed what we're asking for in that area, and to come up with a very good opportunity for development in that area. I would like to see, and I know it can be hard to balance retail and retail costs, something that helps to create an area that people can also walk to. We tend to be driving from, in the wintertime, driving from over here to the town center to pick up a cup of coffee or do something like that, and it would be great to have something that creates a little hub for the neighborhood to be able to access like there was previously in that area. So I think we should maintain a commitment to having a strong design and a strong process for that area. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, would you like me to repeat the question?
No, but I'm going to speak fast this time.
Okay.
Washington Street, Swanton Street is a very interesting piece of property which the town of Winchester own, that there is a openly defined but yet to be negotiated plan. That plan is to put well-planned affordable housing in that location. How we do it is not quite defined. I believe that the first thing we should do is to have neighborhood input, which they've started. Find out what the neighborhood is thinking. I think we should do what I call economic and citizens' concern impact statements or valuations. I think we should find out what everything is going to cost us roughly. I think we should know what the impact of traffic is. How do we mitigate it? I think we should know what our parking requirements are. And I think we should have a draft RFP after we listen to the neighbors and then listen to town meeting. I am in support of the complete project being apartments because the apartment number goes towards the total project, which goes to our 10% housing number. When we keep apartments, we increase the number by X. Retail, I think, should be investigated on a small scale, yet to be defined. Is there going to be a little grocery store, coffee shop? That's yet to be determined. If you go back...
Thank you.
Right.
Okay, Mr. Dixon?
The Swanton Washington Street corner is an example of how poor decision-making seems to replicate itself across town. That was a small neighborhood retail area. It needs to be redeveloped with small retail for that small convenience neighborhood area and some housing, including affordable. But across the town, we need to look at the fact there are several plots that are essentially abandoned, nothing much happening. The North Main Street corridor was zoned so that there would be commercial development that would help bring revenue to the town and provide more retail variety. That approach has been delayed. There's simply too many cases in this town where decisions have been so attempted to be perfect that no decision at all gets made. In a big city, these projects sometimes don't have enough public input. Here, we have so much public input with conflicting views that really the agencies of town haven't worked to build a consensus. There has to be a consensus between people who want good funding for the schools, who want interesting and more varied retail. And as far as traffic, that is actually another issue because Anna Lavillette died from an accident, and we need to have more traffic enforcement. And I support a traffic enforcement bureau with several officers in the police department with the great volume of dangerous traffic and speed we have coming through town. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon. The next question, we'll start with Mr. Johnson.
Yes, ma'am.
"How do you believe our town should meet our affordable housing obligations?" You have 90 seconds.
Affordable housing obligation. The town should move forward to encourage friendly 40Bs to address the affordable housing. The advantage of friendly 40B is the town can work with the developer, make a plan, and take the considerations of the citizens involved. Without a friendly 40B, without a lip, which is a friendly 40B, with a hostile 40B, most, if not all, of the power of the town to control the development is taken away from it by the state and state level. So I support affordable 40Bs that are well-planned, preferably lips. They should be throughout the town. I would encourage smaller, eight or nine, 10 units, as Mr. Covino is proposing on Cross Street. The impact will be throughout the town and will not be as drastic as a 60, 80, 100, 200-unit apartment building. I afford, I support and would request that all 40Bs be apartments, again stated earlier, because that number goes towards our total number of about 800 houses. And that 800 number does grow exponentially every year, every time more than 10 houses are built. I believe that the town, specifically the select board, should take a leadership role, should encourage friendly 40Bs, and I think we better get going and do it now because we will, actually, we have lost our safe harbor.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Johnson. Okay. Mr. Dixon, do you want me to repeat the question?
No, I think most of, everyone within 10 miles probably knows we have an affordable housing issue, and they too probably have those issues. Remember that there are two fundamental problems here. One is that the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, every time an issue of housing comes up, tries to add another requirement, and we are going to have other requirements in that regard. So for instance, a bill has been recently passed and signed that says that within some close proximity to T-stations, additional residential buildings can simply be built without much local input. That hasn't been addressed much at all. There are large areas of the Commonwealth that actually have towns that are very small in population or maybe even still declining. There are federal opportunities for the Commonwealth, such as the East-West Rail Link that would link the other large cities of the Commonwealth across the range, the North-South Rail Link that would be more effective and efficient in terms of transportation up and down the east coast of Massachusetts. These are just some of the things we have to do. Tens of thousands of units have not been built in the last 30 years in eastern Massachusetts. The state has to step up with resources, with incentives to communities that have plenty of open space and have empty seats in their schools, and we have to do our job, too. They're both a set of pathways we have to work together on.
Thank you. Ms. Brady?
Thank you. We have to commit to affordable housing in Winchester. We lose our safe harbor status on March 22nd, so three days after the March 19th election. We need to work together with developers to consider how we can create projects and developments that is, fits within the town of Winchester, across the town of Winchester. As Mr. Johnson said, we need to make sure that we're not overburdening residents in certain areas of town with projects, with development, with traffic. We know that many residents who are living in Winchester and who are renting in Winchester are overburdened in their rental costs. They're spending far more on rental income than they should for what their budgets they have are. We also know that this probably includes people who work in town. Teachers, police officers, firefighters. We need to make sure that the affordable housing stock is going to allow people who work in town to live in town. I think we can be strategic on development that is slow and steady throughout town on smaller lots, but we also will need to consider in order to keep ourselves growing affordable housing that large units, large quantities of units need to be included.
Thank you, Ms. Brady. We'll now go to the next question. We'll start with Mr. Dixon. "Does Winchester need to do more than it is today to advance affirmatively anti-racist policies and procedures?" 90 seconds.
That's a complex set of issues. Certainly, we touched on that with the referendum in terms of whether some people simply didn't want affordable housing or poor people in town. Winchester became what it is today from the historical perspective because it had a lot of hard-working, working-class people like Jim who have been loyal to the town, and many of the older people retired are really suffering from the increases in taxes. I'd like to see some more of the commercial revenue developed in a neighborhood-friendly and retail varied way so that perhaps we could do what some of the big cities are able to do, which is to have somewhat of a residential tax exemption where you take a few tens of thousands of dollars off of the property tax value that's being calculated. And the effect of that ultimately is to help the people who've been loyal to the neighborhoods and to the town and the big cities where they have larger commercial revenue. It's easier to do, but we have to find a way to do that, and that's really crucial. Tax classification here is essentially fairly flat, only a minor difference between a slightly lower commercial rate. Nearby towns and cities, Woburn in particular, have office parks where they have more revenue. Boston and Cambridge have gone perhaps too far, but we have to look at, really looking at redesigning the tax classification and the sources of revenue if we're going to move forward as a sound town.
Thank you. Ms. Brady, do you want me to repeat the question?
Yes, please.
Okay. "Does Winchester need to do more than it is today to advance affirmatively anti-racist policies and procedures?" 90 seconds.
I think we do. The past two years have been very challenging in the country, starting with the May 30th murder of George Floyd. Winchester made a commitment to raising the Black Lives Matter flag over the town commons that has been stolen multiple times and does not show that we visibly have a priority to be anti-racist. The town came together after the murders of several Asian women in Florida to hold a rally behind the library. And I think that's a step in the right direction to acknowledging that we need to meet our commitment to residents in town to make sure that Winchester is a safe and welcoming community. This neighborhood on, that I live in, on the side of Cross Street was at one point a thriving black community. Due to redlining practices, many residents were forced out. And I think we need to acknowledge the history of our town and how we got here and consider how we can better support all residents who are living in town and all residents who are considering Winchester as a place to live.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, do you want me to repeat the question?
No, no. The short and simple answer is yes. We should treat everybody the same way, which is respectful, fair to all people. We should accept zero tolerance for racism and bullying. Everybody deserves and has the right to live in our town, live in our state and our country. We should not allow any racism or bullying, and we cannot stop protecting citizens who feel there is racism and feel there is bullying. You can shout it from the highest hill in Winchester. No, this is not a practice that we do realistically, will not do in the future. We do not want to be a racist community, and we should strive constantly to improve the quality of life of all our citizens. And where there is inequities, we should work towards achieving no goal. Zero tolerance means zero tolerance, not just for employees, but for students, for citizens, for senior citizens. I did it under 90 seconds.
Thank you. Yes, congratulations. Okay, next question, we'll start with Ms. Brady. "How can the select board manage the MBTA construction to protect the town center and promote its interests?" 90 seconds.
I think there's a few ways that we can support the town center with the MBTA construction. For one, there's going to be, both with the MBTA and with the waterfield lot, a lot of construction going on in that area. And we need to make sure that there are safe, easily walkable ways to get between downtown by Thompson Street and the post office over to the businesses and restaurants up on Church Street so that it's, those businesses are not losing out on foot traffic or losing out on revenue from people who may not choose to walk from the post office over to DAGs because they have to go around. So I think that's one area. Another is once that train station is rebuilt. I think that that will bring business into the town. It will be sort of, one, it will be much nicer for us to look at and much safer for the town and for people using the train station. But two, as people are starting to go back to work and back to the office on the commuter rail, it could be that Winchester becomes another stop on their way in or out to take advantage of the businesses that do start to pop up after the construction ends. So I think we have a lot of opportunity to just add more, more business, more retail to the town center once we have that transition completed.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, do you want me to repeat the question?
Yes, please.
"How can the select board manage the MBTA construction to protect the town center and promote its interests?"
The select board should oversee staff, set policies, and make sure it's administered. The town of Winchester has done a very good job last time when they did the demolition. That was primarily an agreement we worked out, i.e. the town, and the engineering department worked out with the MBTA with an awful lot of help from our state legislative body to make it a safe environment. And whatever issues they had learned, I'm sure the construction of the main tracks and everything else, station, will fall in line. We must maintain safety as a priority, if not the first priority. We must maintain traffic, primarily construction traffic, but more than that, the general public's traffic. We should use police details throughout the town. We should have proper signage. We should use police details throughout the town. We should have proper signage. And then we have to address the construction parking debacle. Parking downtown around the MBTA station will be, at best, a major impact to the business community and our citizens. We have to have a good parking plan, which I know they've been working on. We have to have police enforcement. And we have to be fair and equitable to everybody in understanding we're losing parking spaces. This is a long-term project that will ultimately benefit the town of Winchester for many years. But first couple of years is gonna be awful.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Time is up.
Okay.
Mr. Dixon, do you want me to repeat the question?
No, thank you. This, of course, is one of the many projects and capital infrastructures that's long overdue. If elected and perhaps even if I'm not elected, I expect I will approach the Conservation Law Foundation and work with them to see if we can sue the T to require during daily business hours a shuttle. They said that they didn't think that there was enough business to do that and they wouldn't provide that. That seems to me kind of arrogant on their part. Apart from that, as a historian, I discovered that one of the great citizens of this town, John A. Volpe, was the dedicator speaker when the original station was built. Some people think he had had to do with why we have two stations. I would like to see the station renamed the John A. Volpe Winchester Center Station to honor a governor and a national figure who was significant from this town during his public career. And beyond that, I think that electric services through a bus or eventually fuel cell are ones we have to look at. Parking is nice to have, but if people don't want to drive and they're older or they want to have a convenience of not having to park and pollute our environment, then I think shuttle services and transportation that would help the region around us would be very valuable. There's a lot of thinking, like a lot of other policy issues, we have to look at on this issue of transportation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon. The next question, we will start with Mr. Johnson. What activities are important for Winchester to undertake in response to climate change? How would you prioritize them against other programs and expenses? You have ninety seconds.
Interesting question. The town of Winchester, as you know, has just hired a sustainability director. The goal of that person is to help the citizens to make our community more green. In the past, the town of Winchester hired a very competent woman to advise us on our energy usage and consumption. We did a very good job in that over the years. I expect we will, as a community, start working towards a more greener community. If not for any other reason, but there are other reasons, the first thing is the economics of fuel right now. Fossil fuels are going up out of sight in price. We have to address that in our budgets. People cannot afford gas or fuel oil, heating oil, or natural gas when it's reaching six dollars a gallon, five dollars a gallon. Economically, we'll be forced. I would like to see people look a little bit better at solar power. It's not perfect, but we have, as a town, encouraged the use of solar power. And I think we should continue to that, maybe with additional tax benefits. But if you do give people money off their taxes, something suffers on the other end in services. We have done very well being a Winchester tree community, through Jay Gill promoting revitalizing and growing trees when they're cut down with a replacement program. Okay.
Okay. Mr. Dixon, would you like me to repeat the question?
No, the climate area has been something I've been interested in since about the age of fifteen when I discovered the National Wildlife Federation had a congressional report on bills and was talking about a variety of issues. I sent for it. It was a much good reading, not too many teens probably were reading that. But if we look at some of the issues, I think the transfer station project is complex and has some questions that should be analyzed. Perhaps the idea of thousands of people driving their cars to the transfer station isn't the most environmentally responsible approach. In any case, perhaps we should consider trash truck and recycling routes that would encourage those things. And we also have to look at where the stream of trash goes. Germany has an interesting program called the Green Dot Program, which provides incentives to corporations to reduce and more cleverly design the packages that we all get at our doors to deal with waste reduction, which is crucial to these sets of issues. And I think we need to look at that in the United States. I, in fact, filed a bill with the state legislature to look at the German Green Dot Program. Remember, the cities and towns of Massachusetts are part of a common wealth. We are partners, not just separate countries. And we have to look to the Commonwealth and urge them, and where necessary, such as the voting issue, do home role petitions to get those ideas through so we benefit everybody in Massachusetts. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Brady, do you want me to repeat the question?
No, thanks. I got it. So i- in one area, we can work with the Board of Health to consider what are the impacts of climate change? And how can we work with the Board of Health to reduce those impacts or make things safer? So if we have mosquitoes, ticks, rats, because it's not getting too cold in the winter, areas that we can think of for the health of Winchester, what we need to do to mitigate those externalities. We can also work with the Sustainability Director to think of when we're creating new, new development and buildings in Winchester, how those can be green buildings, how those can use electric energy and not other sources. And how we can better insulate buildings so that during the summer and during the winter, there's not a lot of fluctuations that require us to turn up to get it to warm up or, or blast the air conditioning. I think also, you know, considering what is access to charging stations for electric vehicles look like so that we can encourage people when they're making decisions about driving or new vehicles, whether they could go into an electric vehicle versus gas. And then think of things like how we work with our trash recycling, composting, which my husband will hate to hear, but to reduce our output of, of trash, help control the climate change in that way.
Thank you, Ms. Brady. We are now going to take the last question before we go to closing statements. So the last question, and we will start with Mr. Dixon on this one, is how can we make service in town government more inviting to women, young people, and people of different ethnic backgrounds? Mr. Dixon, ninety seconds.
This, of course, is, goes right to the heart of the Communication Study Committee established by Article thirty-one of the Fall Town Meeting, looking at communications issues. I believe that every person coming to town who registers to vote or buys property should get a small little manual. You get one for driver ed, you should get one for town ed so that people can learn about town government outside of New England. County government is strong here. We don't have much of one. In the area of the Cape Cod, finding pressure from development and overdevelopment, they created a Cape Cod Regional Commission. I filed a bill to look at that for Middlesex. Each of these towns around us and some of the cities are thin on staff against developers who have hundreds of dollars per hour lawyers who are willing to stay until ten or eleven o'clock at night, however late these meetings can go. Citizens are doing government for free. Education about this is crucial, and of course civic literacy. Civic literacy is coming back into the schools. Winchester is developing a program in that area. This is Civic Learning Coalition Months, and I've been involved in some of those issues. Civic literacy is understanding what the elections are, how the different offices are, the mandates. And as I say, everyone in government, as well as the citizenry and the residents who will have a voice coming up, hopefully, needs to be educated about these matters. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Brady, do you want me to repeat the question?
No, thanks. I love this question. In order to get women, young people, people from different backgrounds into government, they need to see people who look like them in government. It can be really hard to feel like you're entering into a space where you're the only person who is a woman or the only person who is younger or the only person who has a different color skin than other people. I think we need to encourage people to volunteer on board. We need to encourage them to get engaged by asking about town government, to understand what it is to be civically engaged beyond going to cast a vote, but how you engage with your representatives in town meeting, in other roles. I think we have an opportunity to give people a seat at the table, to invite them in to to Select Board meetings, to say, to, to encourage people to present issues that matter to them. The school committee does a wonderful job of having student ambassadors who come to their meetings and give a report about the high school. The Climate Action Committee has a student ambassador. I think many of our boards have an opportunity that they can engage our high school students who are learning about what policy and politics look like, to engage in, in the places where those matters, matter most to them. And also to engage everybody in getting involved in what local government looks like.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, would you like me to repeat the question?
No, but I like that question. That was a good one. I think the best way is to start out with young adults, high school-aged children. And it's to educate them, to develop a mentoring program. A mentoring program on municipal government, town meeting. Have people come in that are elected officials or town staff and have a discussion with young adults and get them interested. Get them interested in the democratic process. Starting local is the best and probably the only way for most people to at least brush with our democratic process. The other way, how do you encourage people, adults, to get involved? You ask them, you listen. It's a responsibility of people they know, their friends or their neighbors. They should explain to people that move into the community, you know, what Winchester's all about, how our government works. And encourage them to listen to WinCam, listen to the legal women voters, listen to town meeting. And eventually, people will become interested. Some people will become interested. They'll find out about town meeting. I got involved because my kids were in the elementary school system. That's how I got involved. I realized the finance committee was a fantastic place to begin, and town meeting was good to begin.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. I hate to interrupt you. We're, we're going to go to closing statements.
Okay.
The closing statements are in reverse order of the opening statements and are sixty seconds each, and we will start with Ms. Brady.
Thank you again to the League of Women Voters, to WinCam, our moderator, Ms. Copy, to Mr. Johnson and Mr. Dixon, and to those of you joining from home, especially Calder and Morgen. This has been a fun debate. When casting your vote for Select Board on Saturday, March nineteenth, I hope you'll vote for Anthea Brady for one of the two open seats. My commitment to you is to make our town government easier to access and to make our goals and priorities more transparent. I will help Winchester make long-term investments that lead to a thriving, vibrant, thorough community, a community that welcomes all of our residents and that encourages each and every one of you to become engaged in the future of our town. I plan to work collaboratively on, collaboratively on the Select Board with my colleagues, with other boards and with the town to make decisions that balance our commitment to fiscal responsibility with the health, safety, and well-being of our residents. Thank you, and have a good evening.
Thank you. Mr. Dixon, you have sixty seconds.
Thank you. Thank you to the League, WinCam, and everyone else involved in this effort. I ask each person watching and listening to give me your vote and tell your families, friends, and associates of a respectful, knowledgeable candidate who can do what needs to be done and will honor your vote to improve lives and circumstances. You can also share my website, which is at non-case-specific-vincenton.webly.com. Expectations are an important part of life. So I want to make very clear that I believe that the right to life includes and must include the right of women to choose and control their own bodies. And once a person is born, the right to healthcare, the right to housing, and the right to employable skills training. These issues can be influenced by what happens and the actions of the Winchester Select Board and Town Meeting. And we must take care to recognize that these rights are not about a murky, archaic social agenda, but about moving Winchester into the twenty-first century. You can use your contact list to spread the word. Please give me one of your two votes for Select Board, and I thank you and everyone involved in this program and my colleague candidates.
Thank you. And finally, Mr. Johnson, you get the last one tonight.
I'd like to thank everybody involved, including my fellow candidates and the citizens of Winchester. I'm asking for one of your two votes, and I would appreciate it. Thank you. But I'd like to read to you what a very, very nice person wrote. It was Jason Lewis, our state senator. Jason says, "I've worked closely with Jim Johnson previously. He has served on the Select Board, and I firsthand know how dedicated he is to our town and all its residents. Jim's leadership and hard work was instrumental in moving forward in the town's two-decade-long flood mitigation program, the new school building project, and much more. I am happy to support him and grateful that he is willing to serve again on the Select Board." And that summarizes an awful lot of how I feel. Why vote for me? I am qualified. I am experienced. I have the knowledge. I am hardworking. I am respectful to all. I work collaboratively with people. I use common sense. I care about our town, Winchester. I listen, I think, I ask questions, and the decision I have made in the past and will in the future is what is best for the entire town of Winchester.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
I get results. Thank you.
I want to thank all of you for participating in tonight's debate, and now I will return the program over to the host.
Thank you.
Thank you, candidates, for showing commitment to our community by running for public office and for participating in our debate. This debate can be viewed at WinCam On Demand. Thank you to members of the public who rose to the occasion and sent us a lot of suggestions for debate questions. We thank WinCam for producing this event and the town clerk's office and the election workers for organizing a safe, orderly, and inclusive election. We have, we here on screen acknowledge contributions by a number of League volunteers who helped publicize, plan, and carry out this series of debates and related online information. And mostly, we thank you, the voters, for exercising your right to vote and have your voice heard. Voting will be at Winchester High School from seven AM to eight PM on Saturday, March nineteenth. And so we're, we're finished with this debate, but please stay tuned for the Planning Board Debate, which we will begin after a break of about ten minutes. Okay, we're done. Good evening. Welcome to a debate for the Town of Winchester Planning Board, sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Winchester. My name is Lynn Brodsky. It is my pleasure to represent the League of Women Voters of Winchester as we bring you this evening's event. Thank you to WinCam for hosting the Zoom format of this event and for broadcasting and streaming it to the public over local cable TV channels and the WinCam website, respectively. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization with a mission to promote informed participation by all eligible voters and public understanding of major policy issues. We do not support or oppose any candidates or political parties. We do study and take positions about major policy issues. We are organized at the national, state, and local levels. Our policy positions and activities can be reviewed on the respective websites. If this forum and our mission meet your needs or even inspire you, we encourage you to donate or become a member. All people may join. Student membership is free. This year, there are contested seats on four townwide boards, and these are the subject of two debates this evening and two debates held last week. All candidates who are debating this week and last, and candidates who are running unopposed, and many of the candidates for town meeting have generously provided the League with information about themselves and about their candidacies. You may find these candidate profiles on our website at l w v winchester.org. Thank you, candidates, for submitting your profiles to the League. This evening's debate will be moderated by Margaret Cope. Margaret is a trained League moderator and a member of the League of Women Voters of Lexington.
Thank you, Lynn. Good evening. The Winchester Planning Board has five members who each serve a three-year term. The elections for these seats are staggered. This year, one seat for a three-year term is being contested in this election. If a member of the planning board resigns before the end of their term, the remainder of the term is filled in the following year's election. This year, one seat for a one-year term is uncontested. The candidates running for a three-year term on the planning board are Diop Gerius and Philip Fratirelli. This three-year term is the subject of tonight's debate. A single candidate is running unopposed for the one-year term on the planning board, and according to our League policy regarding unopposed candidacies, we will not be holding a debate for the one-year seat. So the rules for tonight's debate are as follows. Each candidate will have up to 90 seconds for an opening statement. The order of speaking was determined ahead of time by a random method. After that, we will ask the candidates a series of prepared questions in rotating order. Each candidate will have up to 90 seconds for each answer. After each set of answers, the candidates or I may request a rebuttal. Should a candidate choose to rebut, the candidate will have up to 30 seconds to do so. I may on occasion allow a second round of rebuttals or ask a follow-up question, depending on how the discussion has gone. Personal references about other candidates are out of order. After our final question, each candidate will have up to 60 seconds for a closing statement. The closing statements will be given in reverse order from the opening statements. We now start with the opening statements, 90 seconds each, and the order of speaking will be Diop Gerius, followed by Philip Fratirelli. Mr. Gerius.
Yep. Thank you. Good evening. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for sponsoring this forum, and I'd like to thank everyone out in TV land for attending. I am running for reelection to the planning board. I have lived in Winchester off of North Main Street since 1997. By profession, I am an astrophysicist. I was a founding member of the group which fought to stop development of Wright Lock Farm. That effort, along with my concern over the course of development along North Main Street and its neighborhoods, jumpstarted my journey to serve in public office. I have been a town meeting member since 2008 and a member of the planning board and the Housing Partnership Board since 2016. I am currently Chair of the Planning Board. The six years, I have most, the most experience on the board. Things are moving forward in Winchester and at the planning board. We have development in town center. I've been intensely involved in all of the recent special permit projects in the Center Business District. We are re-envisioning North Main Street so that we can move forward and revitalize that underdeveloped corridor. The board is studying how we can help families accommodate live-in parents or adult family members with special needs. In addition, we need to look forward and prepare our town for rapidly changing natural and economic environments. I have had extensive involvement in formulating the town's comprehensive master plan and its housing production plan. I have had years of experience in dealing with residents and developers, town meeting, town government, and boards. I have the experience this town needs to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fratirelli, you have 90 seconds.
Thank you, Margaret, and thank you to the League of Women Voters, WinCam, and for all those watching at home. My name is Philip Fratirelli. I am nearly lifelong president of Winchester. I lived here in 1986 when I was four years old. I'm a product of Winchester Public Schools, the graduate of Winchester High School, Boston College, and Suffolk Law School. My parents, Anna and Filippo, are founders of Restaurante Lucia and Winchester Center. And I am an attorney with background, background in real estate law. I served on the North End Waterfront Neighborhood Council when I was a resident of that neighborhood in Boston for six years, and three as president. Not long after graduating from law school, just actually two weeks before taking the bar exam, I opened my first restaurant in the North End and also have had the opportunity of developing a mixed-use building in East Boston that's home to another restaurant, a yoga studio, and a series of residential apartments. So I have experience on both the resident and proponent side of planning and zoning issues. As a small businessperson, I understand what businesses and developers are looking for before they invest in the community. I've also been through the permitting process in Winchester for renovations we have done to our homes, and I'm familiar with the challenges homeowners face here in doing that kind of work. After living in Boston, unfortunate to have been able to move back to town to start my own family with my wife Kelly. The last time I was on TV, I forgot to mention my daughters' names by name, and they were a little disappointed. So I just want to say that I'm the proud father of Olivia, Adeline, and Caroline, all ages of six, four, and two.
Thank you. I will now ask a series of questions that were prepared by the League of Women Voters of Winchester with extensive input from the public. The questioning will end at 9:20, and it is now 8:28, so we have a little under an hour, to allow for closing statements, even if not all the questions have been asked. And we will start the questions with Mr. Fratirelli, and the question is, is there any single issue that motivates you to run for the planning board? If yes, what is it and why? If no, what do you think is the most important issue facing the planning board today? 90 seconds.
Over the last two years, we've seen a historic number of people, mostly young people, looking to run for town meeting and townwide boards in Winchester. The reason for that is we were all locked in our houses during COVID with sometimes with our children. We learned how much local government affects our lives, from schools to mass, outdoor dining, to the property taxes we pay. I decided to run for town meeting last year because of that poll, and in sitting in town meeting, was struck by the decisions of the planning board. How the concerns of young parents, of young children, of business owners, homeowners, just wasn't present in their discussion. And the more I dug into the planning board, the more I found reasons to add my voice to the discussion. There's only been one contested election for planning board in over a decade. So none of the people on the board right now have had to win public support to win their seats. And that matters. When the planning board does surveys of local residents, they are lucky to get a couple hundred responses. The Winchester Master Plan 2030 drew only about 1,100 respondents for a document intended to last and affect our residents for decades. So in running and deciding to do this, I wanted to bring my perspective, but I also wanted to bring a number of new stakeholders to the table so that we can all be a part of the future of this town. so that we can all be a part of the future of this town.
Thank you. Mr. Gerius. Would you like me to repeat the question?
No, thank you. I would like to learn how to unmute. There is no single issue that motivates me to run. There are a number of issues. I think the one that preoccupies me is the need for more affordable housing for all of our Winchester residents. We have a dramatic deficit of housing that's affordable to most people in town. A few years ago, when the median home price in town was seven hundred and fifty thousand, only fourteen percent of Winchester households could actually afford to buy that median household. Now that housing price has doubled. So we have a number of people in town who are housing cost burdened, which means they pay more than thirty percent of their income towards housing. And that means they are actually eligible for subsidized housing. So we have a dramatic need for housing in town, which is affordable to all people. We have a need for housing which accommodates people's lives if people want to have their elderly parents live with them or they have adult members of their family who need independent but close-by living. We don't have an option for them. I'm also very concerned about the economic future of this town because we are a mostly residential town, and that's where our tax income comes from. And we need to be able to allow people to stay in town when their kids have grown up so that we can continue to help them support our town revenues. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question, we'll start with Mr. Gerius. What is the role of the Planning Board today? If this is different from what the role should be ideally, please expand on this. Ninety seconds.
The role of the Planning Board today, I think, is actually pretty much in line with what was... When the Planning Board gets its... It gets... It's set up by the state constitution, or I'm sorry, the state law. And in the state law, it is stated that we are to be concerned with housing for our residents. The Planning Board has a role in subdivision regulation. But it also, one of the things that's primarily pointed out in the state law is that we are the keepers of the vision of land use in town. And it's the Planning Board's responsibility to come up with a comprehensive master plan and to make sure that that master plan is created by the people of the town. So the Planning Board's job is to look forward over the next decade or two decades, understand what the problems are, and how we arrive at solutions for those problems. And the Planning Board does that. It also, through advocacy, it is sort of the informal people of the zoning, but zoning is passed by town meeting. So while the Planning Board may suggest things, it's up to town meeting to pass it. So the Planning Board is mostly an advisory board. In Winchester, the Planning Board has been given the authority to grant special permits in the Center Business District. But in general, it's an advisory board to other town boards and committees and to town meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fratirelli, would you like me to repeat the question?
Sorry, I muted myself. So I... This is the question. I think looking back over more than twenty years, the Planning Board does now more than it has done in the past. Obviously, that includes the Central Business District jurisdiction. It also, you know, some of the subdivisions and stuff that's relatively a new development. The thing that troubles me the most about what the Planning Board is doing is taking its... Taking the right it has to make recommendations to the Zoning Board of Appeals. You know, I've watched a lot of Planning Board video meetings over Zoom and over the last few years. And it's an extra layer that I don't think is necessary. In order to be a member of the Planning Board, I'm sorry, of the ZBA, you have to be appointed. You know, it's made up by attorneys and architects and people who, you know, have a professional basis of being there. So they do a good job. I don't see what the Planning Board is bringing to those discussions. Oftentimes, they're crammed in at the end of a meeting, and a petitioner is forced to have to pay for their attorney to be present. Also, you know, butters have their frustrations and not be able to speak and enforce their concerns, and this is all in an advisory thing. This isn't a decision-making body. So it just adds a level that is not necessary for the town. The Planning Board shouldn't be just debating on, you know, the setbacks of steps on retaining law. That just is an overreach, in my opinion. And the cost they want, cost, you know, costs in lawyers and years, that adds the house price, that adds the cost of housing that we have. And I know one... Sorry.
Okay, thank you. The next question, we'll start with you, Mr. Fratirelli.
Excuse me, meta-moderator. May I have a rebuttal?
Absolutely. You have thirty seconds.
Oh, thank you. I would like to point out that the role of the Planning Board in advising the zoning board is required by our zoning laws. And it is also the zoning board of appeal accepts input from the Planning Board, the Design Review Committee, the Historical Commission. And though all of those are there to provide expert opinion on our various areas to the Zoning Board of Appeals, the zoning board takes that input and uses their own expertise to come up with an independent decision. So the Planning Board isn't an obstacle, it's a help. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fratirelli, do you have any more comments to make on this?
Well, I would just to say that, you know, in talking to people who, like myself, I own my house, we did some renovations before we moved into the house. And talking to contractors and talking to architects, I mean, the response I get is that the system is broken, especially the system relating to variances. And it's just another level of delay and expense and cost that is borne by the homeowner, and it affects everything that we want in this town is to make things more affordable for people to live here.
Thank you. I think we're ready to move on to the next question. Thank you. And we will start with Mr. Fratirelli. How do you believe our town should meet our affordable housing obligations? Ninety seconds.
I, you know, affordable housing is a really important issue, obviously, in this campaign or this election and in the town in general. We're about to fall out of our safe harbor, which means that we're not producing enough affordable housing stock as required, not only of our moral obligation, but our obligations under state law. And that is, you know, it's disheartening. It means that a developer could come in and with very little input from the town, build an affordable housing project pretty much anywhere they want, you know, where they own their property. And we don't really have a say in that process. And ultimately, that comes down to planning. I know, you know, over the last few years, there've been projects reasonable in size and scope, especially along the North Main Street corridor, that have been rejected. So, you know, this is why we find ourselves in a position to fall out of this important safe harbor. And ultimately, you know, as we look to North Main Street, that is the most important, you know, place that the town has to develop mixed-use housing and, you know, commercial and multiple, you know, like I said, mixed-use housing.
Thank you. Mr. Gerius.
Thank you. So I think it's important to look at the two types of affordable housing we want to look at. One is the deeded affordable housing, which is indeed, as Mr. Fratirelli pointed out, where the town is legally bound to produce a certain amount of deed-restricted housing. And there's also affordable housing for, affordable for the rest of people, those who are earning, say, between eighty and one hundred and twenty percent of the area median income. So we have two different types of housing. In the case of deeded affordable housing, it's really not the Planning Board which goes through doing that. We would have to propose new zoning districts to allow larger developments, and that would have to go through town meeting, or we can do what are called friendly fortyBs, where we work with developers who have purchased a lot to come up with housing. For a general, for affordability for the rest of town, the key thing there is we need to produce more units, and we need about seven hundred more units to meet that pent-up demand. North Main Street is a place where we can get more units, and certainly, we're looking to produce about two hundred and fifty units in the downtown. I would note, however, that North Main Street is not in the Planning Board's jurisdiction. That's actually in the jurisdiction of the Zoning Board of Appeals. There have been no large proposals on North Main Street, so none have been rejected because none have been proposed. We are looking at redoing the zoning along North Main Street to make it easier to build the housing we need there, and the Planning Board is right in the middle of doing that at this moment.
Thank you, Mr. Gerius. Thank you. The next question, we will start with Mr. Gerius. How can the Planning Board take into account competing visions of the character and future of the town as it moves forward with development of affordable housing and more commercial properties? Ninety seconds.
That's actually, that's a difficult question to answer because there are so many different versions. People like to see Winchester as a small town. We certainly have a smaller scale of development. We have areas which can see more heightened development, such as North Main Street and the Center Business District. We are going to have to look at how we, at the rest of our neighborhoods and see where we can place higher density. And that requires a really robust conversation within town. I don't have the answer to that. We have, we know that there are competing interests. When we looked at the master plan and we reached out to the thousand-plus people, or the thousand-plus people who reached out to us, which is, by the way, one of the largest responses of any master plan in the Commonwealth. We've got people who wanted to maintain a small-town character. We wanted, we had people who wanted to be able to, who wanted larger-scale development for housing. So I think it has to be context-specific. We have to look at the zoning based on what's in the neighborhood, and we need people to envision how they want to handle this housing crisis. Some areas may be able to take higher density. Other areas are special, and we don't want to put it there. There is no single answer, and there's no easy solution. This is something that requires a community conversation, which I believe the Planning Board is leading and which I have been a part of for the last six years. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fratirelli, would you like me to repeat the question?
Yes.
How can the Planning Board take into account competing visions of the character and the future of the town as it moves forward with development of affordable housing and more commercial properties?
I would agree with Mr. Gerius's answer. I mean, this is an ongoing conversation. It's one that can't be answered in ninety seconds. You know, the characteristics that make this town special need to be protected, as well as, you know, we need to meet our goals in terms of housing. We need to address a recent state law that requires us to build a zone for multi-unit housing within half a mile of our commuter rail stations. I mean, these are all, you know, complicated issues that require, you know, deep study and deep, you know, reaching out to the community and making sure that we're doing something that's responsible, not only for the town as it is, but also for future residents.
Thank you. The next question, we'll start with you, Mr. Fratirelli. How should climate change inform or impact the activities of the Planning Board? Ninety seconds.
I'm a big proponent of the environment. I think, you know, climate change is the challenge that we are facing, not only as a global community, but here in Winchester as well. In the renovations we're doing to our home, we're adding solar panels. We're adding electric car chargers in the garage. You know, in taking a house that was built in nineteen seventy-four to modern standards, we're increasing the efficiency of all the electronics inside and also the insulation. You know, so I think there is a place for, you know, renovation and bringing our housing stock up to, you know, more green standards. And as a planning board, we can also have a role in the way that we're designing development. I mean, I know the bike path has been a big topic in the discussions for ten, Congress Way. The Winchester bike path is a little bit disappointing, if I must say so myself. And I think the one that you have in Lexington is far superior, especially, you know, when you're taking kids on the path. So I'd love to see Winchester develop more, you know, bike paths and, you know, ways for us to get around by walking. That's smart development.
Thank you. Mr. Gerius, ninety seconds.
So one of the, one of the things that the Planning Board is required to do by the state as part of its master plan is to look at environmental consequences of development. That's part of land use. And one of the visions that came out of our twenty thirty master plan that came out in twenty twenty was an entire section devoted, I think, one of the four main focus areas, was looking at sustainability and how the, how the town can address multiple environmental questions, such as certainly our climate change, which is occurring, how we deal with increased energy, how we deal with a changing natural environment in terms of our forests. So one of the roles the Planning Board plays in that, because it is the keeper of the master plan of that vision, is to help coordinate between the different arms of town government in order to ensure that we're all moving forward in the same direction so that we're all aware of what the goals are. And one of the things the master plan did is it came up, it's required to come up with very specific actions and a timeline to complete those actions. And so the Planning Board is working, will be working, as we set up an implementation committee, to work with all the other parts of town government, as well as non-governmental organizations, to make sure we're all pulling in the same direction and that we have metrics to measure how far we've come and how far we need to go. So the Planning Board is very much at the heart of that effort. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question, we will start with Mr. Gerius. As a member of the Planning Board, how will you approach the planned development at ten Converse Place? Ninety seconds.
Okay, I was, I was hoping you wouldn't ask this question, and the reason why is because I am sitting on a quasi-judicial board, and I cannot comment on my decision-making capability because it's before us, and we're actually right in the middle of voting for it. So I would love to answer the question. I, but in the particulars or intent Converse, I really can't provide any. I can talk in general about development downtown and the difficulty there is in balancing what I think people have as a vision of the village character of downtown. And with the overall impetus of the planning that was, the zoning that was passed by town meeting in twenty fifteen, which was to encourage larger-scale development. So the zoning that was passed in twenty fifteen envisions two hundred and fifty extra residential units downtown. That will require denser buildings. And being able to meld that with the existing architecture, which is both consistent with it, but also forward-looking, is difficult. And so that requires difficult decisions. And it's just a question of listening to the community, but also being mindful that the Planning Board does have to follow the zoning bylaws. And there are certain things which developers are allowed to do by those zoning bylaws, and we have to respect them. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fratirelli, would you like me to repeat the question?
Yes.
As a, as a member of the Planning Board, were you to become a member of the Planning Board, how would you approach the planned development at ten Converse Place?
So in furtherance of what Mr. Gerius said, it seems as though the Planning Board is eager to wrap this up before the election, before there is a possible change of the makeup of the people on the Planning Board. I've been, as I said, watching a lot of the discussion, and do you have some concerns about the proposals I, specifically the height of it? The fifth floor, I think, is a little bit out of character with surrounding buildings, and it would be detrimental to views of our beautiful town hall. But I know, and the other concern I would, I think, would have is about the potential of traffic issues backing up in front of the Public Safety Building from Congress Place. When, you know, the new development might, will probably have a new restaurant. You'll have two restaurants. When you, when uh, you know, uh the the new development might, we'll probably have a new restaurants. You'll have two restaurants in a very tight. Uh tight area that are gonna require big box trucks to deliver to them. And adding that with an automated garage system is just, is gonna cause some uh backing up of traffic, but. There might be solutions as to, you know, changing the the way uh. The the direction of the traffic goes down Commerce Place. I mean, there's, there's ways to to work that out. Uh but again, I I would just say that. Uh I have some concerns with, you know, the plant project as it is now.
Thank you. Uh the next question, we.
Madam Moderator, may I offer a a a very short.
Yeah, thirty seconds.
Okay, so um. The planning board is, uh one of the strange things about decisions on special permits. Is that every member of the planning board can only miss a single public hearing. And one of the reasons we're trying to get this done prior to the election is not because we wanna get it, we don't want the new board to have a say in it. It's because if we lose two members of the planning board to the election, then essentially. They will not, we will not have enough people to make a decision because they will legally not have been at all of the hearings but one. And we'd essentially have to start the whole process over. And so uh, I don't think that's fair to the developer. So that's why we are trying to get this done.
Thank, thank you for that explanation.
Can I just say, I I'm not, I I'm not implying that there's anything uh, you know, under. Untoward about this. I I just think, I just wanted to point out the fact that this is probably something that I will not be able to.
I think, I think this was a good exchange because it brought out the the. Uh interesting fact that the members of the planning board can only miss one. One, one hearing and that if you start to get people not getting re-elected, then you might have to. People would have to start all over. That's, that's an interesting fact. Uh so for that, we'll move on to number, the next question, and we'll start with Mr. Fratirelli. What are your thoughts about the relationship between the planning board and the town planner? Ninety seconds.
Again, I mean, I'm not, I'm not part of of the planning board, so I can't speak specifically to it. I know he was just uh given. A review by the planning board of his job performance. It seems like they work well in tandem um with him and and. Assistant planner and and the sustainability director and. Uh the town engineer. I mean, it seems like, you know, Winchester is is very fortunate for the 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 staff that we have at Town Hall. Uh they're competent and and, you know, in a lot of ways extraordinary their work is uh through very tough circumstances. So it seems like, you know, he probably does a great job and uh. But again, I'm not, I'm not part of the executive session meetings and don't really, uh we can't really speak to that.
Thank you. Mr. uh Jarius.
I I hope Brian's not listening in because he's gonna get a swollen head from this. Brian is an excellent partner with the planning board. Um he's been with the town for seven years. Um I think the boards, I I see him as a um. A peer, he's someone who has a deep experience and he understands. Um not just the zoning bylaws, but he works extremely well with developers and residents. And other committees. He brings a um, an independent voice. He doesn't always agree with us. Um but he always, he is um, I mean, I guess one of the questions is uh. What role the planning department has. Um we have a very small planning department. It's composed of just a single person, Brian. Um he is a a a jack of all trades and a master of most, so um. We rely upon him for research, um for his opinion, obviously. I think we work well together. I wish there were two Bryans, but there's only one. Um so I don't know what more to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh the next question, we'll start with you, Mr. Jarius. What are your thoughts about how the planning board works with the other town bodies such as the Select Board? The Design Review Committee and the Conservation Commission. Ninety seconds.
I think that our our, we, in general, we work fairly well. I'd have to say that um over the years, it's ebbed and flowed. We, we, we're not as close, you know, the 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 Con Con Conservation Commission and the Planning Board. Um we have some areas that are in interest that are shared, um but we have very different um briefs. So we don't overlap with them as much. Uh Design Review Commission is a very important part of the planning board's decision-making process. Um we rely upon them. Uh they have a a an amazing team of people who work together. So I think that we don't always agree, but we certainly will listen and value, listen to them and value their opinion. The Select Board and the Planning Board, I'll admit, have had a rocky relationship in the past. Um I think that. It's something that we can both work to improve upon. I think we have a lot in common. We all have the best interests in the town. On our um. Do we take that to heart? So I. I I think we can work, we can, we can improve our relationship. We can work better. And I'm hoping that when we work through the master plan. And we look at how all of our different boards can work together, we can, we can work together in a much more cooperative way. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fratirelli, would you like me to repeat the question?
No, um I would just say, you know, from being an outside observer, I think, you know, there's definitely. It seems like there's been some conflicts in the past and scars from for, you know, from where uh. Scurbishes are 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 long lasting, but um if I were to be elected, uh I think, you know, that would be something that. I would, I mean, I have, I have good personal relationships with most of the members of uh. Specifically the Select Board, and I think that's really important. Uh you know, not only. For the work that the planning board does, but for the town. I think, you know, to 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 foster. Uh, you know, these rivalries isn't isn't benefiting anybody, you know, I'm not accusing. Um I I just think that, you know. A lot of uh, you know, a lot of this stuff is 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 from from battles past and 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 and. Trying to bring a new voice to the the planning board. I would wanna kind of start fresh with with the Select Board in particular.
Thank you. Okay, the next question, we'll start with you, Mr. Fratirelli. Please comment. On your thoughts about zoning and development of other areas such as Holton Street or North Main Street.
Um and that, we spoke a little bit about it earlier. I think uh North Main Street is a really important part of of the future of the town, especially uh. You know, in terms of um, you know, commercial development on first floors and possible residential development on second and third floors, I think. You know, as it stands now, um there would require some zoning changes for for that to really. Be uh a piece of of the puzzle. And I know there's uh residential. Interests that we need to make sure that we're protecting uh along, along that corridor. Uh but, you know, it it just, it it's part of a lively, um you know, downtown area is is um. Development in in some of the the garages, some now closed. Uh you know, there there's just a lot of opportunity. If you, if you look at the the recent study that was done by the M A P C, you know, there's this potential for some change there, and I think it's exciting. And I think. You know, as a town, we need to foster the little commercial tax base that we have and and potentially add to it. Uh so that we can afford, you know, the things that we need for our school system and and for our future residents, uh seniors, you know, everybody. Uh so, and and on Holton Street, you know, I I've heard the. So the call, it it might be a hostile forty B coming there and it's it's troubling, but I think, you know, uh again, that's something that needs attention and study.
Thank you. Mr. Jarius, ninety seconds.
Um, I think Mr. Fratirelli covered it pretty well. North Main Street, I think, can be a very exciting bustling commercial area. Um I know one of the, one of the reasons I came on the board was because I was concerned about. The impact of development along North Main Street, on the North Main Street neighborhoods, because I live in one of them. And one of the things that I, that I worked with the planning board a few years back was to protect the. The the first lot off of Main Street to make sure they remained residential. And that way, we could focus on intense commercial development along Main Street and still have um protected our neighborhoods. Um I think that the Main Street has a a lot of different areas, so it's not a one-size-fits-all um zoning. Or or possibilities along Main Street. Some areas can take much larger buildings than others. I think it's going to be, uh, we're going to create, I think, an interesting um. Uh what's the word? A quilt maybe of of um zoning in order to make sure that the appropriate building gets built in the appropriate place. Holden Street is an interesting one. Um it it seems that um our our past fears of a of a forty B going in there might be. Alleviated a bit. The current owners are, seem to be a long-term uh owners for industrial use. We are looking forward to having a study of that area, just like what M A P C did for the North Main Street. To understand its development and what the neighbors, neighborhoods can take. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Jarius, the next question is for you to begin. It's. How would you support the additional workload for the building department? As they perform required inspections in planned large developments such as those at River Street and Cambridge Street?
I would hire more people. I think that the staff there is doing a heroic job. Um I think they're overworked and they need more people. Um I think that part of that is because. We just don't have, we 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 don't have as many people in Town Hall working in some of those areas. I can call out that. Um for instance, in our planning department, um we have one person and comparably sized towns have several more. Um and typically, uh, you know, if we were, we were looking actually to. Hire an assistant town planner who would be aiding the planning department, especially when they're um in their meetings with the Z B A where they, the um. They work with the Z B A. Um so I think we need to hire more people. Uh we have an enormous amount of development going on in town, so I don't know how many uh full-time employees they need in order to support their work. I know that the planning board is very interested in 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 getting additional staff in the planning department, which would offload some of that work from. From the building department, not, not, for instance, the part where they okay permits. But things like staffing Z B A meetings, which um one of the members of the planning, of the building department does do, she staffs the evening meetings. Um so those are duties that could be taken up elsewhere. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fratirelli, would you like me to repeat the question?
No, I I I think I I wanna have further conversation with the building department, see what their needs are. Obviously, you know, hiring people. Is uh, this is a big process in the town. It's involves, you know, bringing it to town meeting and and all that, but. Um I'd like to see what specific needs are. I mean, I've, I know in in some of my research on the planning board, there's been some recommendations. Uh for for updating the zoning uh in town. And again, that's a process that the planning board controls to bring to town meeting. Um that would make their lives a little bit easier. And I think, you know, updating our zoning code. Uh is something that that is an important role, that the planning board should be spearheading. Uh to make life a little bit easier for the, for the building department. So uh. You know, again, I I don't know enough about the the current staff of of the planning department to to answer fully, but. Uh I think it it should be a part of the conversation, you know, those guys. Have a really important role in the safety and health of of our town, to just to inspect and make sure that everything is up to the the standards that we require.
Thank you. Uh this will be the last question now before we go to closing statements. And we will start this with Mr. Fratirelli. How can we improve communication between the planning board and town residents?
You know, that's, that's a great question. I mean, now nowadays, you know, and and especially in deciding to run for the planning board. I've just been overwhelmed with all the information that's out there about what the planning board does and, and you know, transcripts and videos of. Of meetings going back years and and so, you know, the information is out there. And I mean, I think part of it is, is. People who are on the planning board, if we can attract attention uh in town, there hasn't been a lot of attention to the planning board. I mean, you know, thirteen years, one election was contested. It's nobody's fault, it's, you know, but. I think in running, I wanted to bring attention to the important work that this board does, and maybe we can get people at the table who. You know, might bring different perspectives and and uh so, so that's, that's what I think. I mean, I I, you know. Now with social media and 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 all all the capacity we have to communicate digitally. Uh there's really no excuse that that there shouldn't be a profound amount of communication between this board and uh. Our bosses, you know, our taxpayers.
Thank you. Mr. Jarius, would you like me to repeat the question?
Uh no, thank you. I agree with Mr. Fratirelli. Most people don't know what the planning board is or what it does or why we even have one. Um I think there's, there are a lot of people confuse the planning board with the zoning Board of Appeals. Uh a lot of people think the planning board has something to do with um, you know, permits, when if you go out and. You wanna work on your house, the planning board, it doesn't have anything to do with that. It is much more, I mean, one of the problems is, it's, it's. It doesn't have direct power over a lot of things. It's not like the Select Board where they make decisions every week. And it's very well defined what they do. Uh I so I, I think the planning board, obviously, I I believe it has a very important role. I think it has a. Sort of a a midterm to longer term role for a lot of what it does, trying to look forward. Um we have struggled in the past to get people to um to follow us. I think uh certainly the the. Uh developments in Town Center have brought us a lot of new fans on our Zoom um. Meetings, um and I I hope that going forward, the uh the easy availability of that will let more people um participate. I know we had a tremendous outreach when we did uh the master plan. We did get over a thousand people who came out with surveys and we had a lot of meetings. I really look forward to the planning board being able to go out into the community and have community meetings, once that's. Back to normal. It's one of the things I've always wanted to do, was to have meetings in each of the precincts, so that we can listen to. What residents have to say without them having to come to us. We go to them. I still believe. Uh physical meetings in person are the best way to communicate. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now move to the closing statements. You'll each have sixty seconds each, and these, there will still be in reverse order of the opening statements, so we'll start with Mr. Fratirelli. You have sixty seconds.
So, as a resident, as a small business owner, parents, you know, children, heavily invested in the future of this town. I wanted to have a voice complaining for that future. In running for townwide office, I've been asked a number of times what Winchester means to me. My father is an immigrant. He left his home in Italy to come to America in nineteen seventy. And on the mother's side, her parents are immigrants also from Italy. When you're a first generation American, it's easy to feel as though you are without a country. Even without a home. But for almost forty years, Winchester has been our home. In good times and bad, through floods, recessions, now global pandemic, the people of Winchester have accepted us as their own. And supported our little family business. Um so though I lived in Boston as a young man, it opened. My own restaurants there. Winchester is where I wanna be. It's where my wife and I have chose to raise our family. And we face a lot of problems, and I wanna be part of the planning for those, the solutions to those problems. And I'm asking for your vote uh uh March nineteenth at the high school.
Thank you. Uh Mr. Jarius, you have sixty seconds.
Uh thank you. Uh so the question is, why should you vote for me? Um so I've talked about my experience, but I wanna tell you about why, what makes this, why I'm so passionate about being on the planning board. I care very deeply about making housing affordable and accessible. And I see a Winchester. Where housing accommodates the needs of all of our residents, regardless of age or abilities or incomes. Uh my parents ran a small business. They were, they were, they were medical um doctors. Uh I I I am not a small business person, but I did watch their struggles. I want our small businesses to thrive. Against the onslaught of online shopping. I see a Winchester with bustling business districts, both in the town center and on North Main Street. Uh I also understand, I believe, the pivotal role that town government plays in helping our community pull more resilient against climate change. Leading it towards a sustainable future and helping us help each other. I believe in cooperation and consensus and moving forward together. Please vote for me on March nineteen. Thank you.
Thank you both very much. Please remember when you go to vote that Diom Garius and Philip Fratirelli. Are running for a three-year term on the Select Board. Now, on the planning board, I'm sorry about that. Uh the candidate.
Now they're really gonna vote like us if we're.
The candidate running for the one-year seat on the planning board is not opposed. Thank you for participating in tonight's debate, and now I'd like to return. Thank you for participating in tonight's debate, and now I'd like to return you to our host, Lynn.
Okay, full disclosure, that last typo was my fault. It wasn't Margaret's.
Peace to the boards.
Yeah, so um, thank you candidates for showing commitment to our community by running for public office and for participating in our debate. Uh, and by the way, thank you to our fantastic margera- moderator Margaret Copie for this evening. Um, this debate can be viewed at WinCam on demand. Thank you to the members of the public who rose to the occasion and sent us a lot of suggestions for debate questions. We thank WinCam for producing this event. We thank the town clerk's office and the election workers for organizing a safe, orderly, and inclusive election. We here on screen would like to acknowledge contributions by a number of league volunteers. Who helped publicize, plan, and carry out this series of debates and related online information. And we mostly thank you, the voters, for exercising your right to vote and have your voice heard. Voting will be at Winchester High School, in case you haven't heard, from seven AM to eight PM on Saturday, March nineteenth. Your vote is your voice. Thank you and bye.